This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back from the executive session. No decisions were made. We'll be continuing our Tenino City Council March 9th work session. We will begin, well, the only thing on the work session agenda is Mayor Protem Linda Godovak will give an update from the Finance Committee meeting held on 3/4/2021. Linda, the Finance Committee Chair, you have the floor.
Cutter and the mayor and our interim Clerk Treasurer Scott met on the 4th, and there was a decision made to increase the amount, the salary for a Clerk Treasurer while we're looking for a permanent one. We feel that it's what we need to do in order to get a really, really good candidate. Everybody that works or everybody that around the city council and the Chief Clerk knows it's a really tough job, so that's what I'm going to ask the council to approve tonight.
So yeah, we looked at the budget. The budget is, and Cutter, you can chime in too. You were at the meeting, but we all realize that the budget is, it has some pretty thin margins. But based on some of the feedback that we just received regarding mediation, we feel it is not unreasonable to reevaluate the salary for the Clerk Treasurer position. We've gotten very few applicants. When we look at, you know, we look at similar positions in the salary ranges throughout the area, it's, you know, it's, it's not a very well-funded position, but we know how difficult it is and how important it is to find somebody that understands finance and office management. And, you know, we, we have had difficulties with that, and it's important that we find somebody that, that really understands the, the job. So we are asking that we can, that the council consider adding, adding some, some money to that salary. And we, and the Finance Committee's recommendation is that we will be able to handle that. It would require a budget amendment sometime in the year. But if there is, now would be the time to ask the Finance Committee about its, you know, that proposal's effects on, on the budget. John O'Callahan, you're the, you're the senior, senior council member here. What are you, what are your thoughts?
First off, where's it, where's the money actually coming from? Are we looking for, looking down the road for something that may be coming up? And are we seeing anything from the federal side? Money's going to states where their budgets are upside down, like the state of Washington, New York, and a couple of other places from the, the latest round of the COVID-19. What are we expecting there? So basically, how are we recovering the increase?
So we have, we have a fund excess. So at the end of the year, you know, we have a fund excess in the budget despite having taken the, you know, the, the loss from the fraud case. So that, that did, we would have a very large fund excess had it not been for that incident, but we are confident we'll be recovering the, the money lost. But even if we don't, as it sits, we, we have money in the budget left over at the end of the year. So we would just be borrowing from the excess. So, you know, we didn't, we didn't pass a, you know, a, a budget with a balance of zero. We passed a budget with excess money. So we would be using from that.
Okay, so it's not borrowing. It's just, just a budget reconciliation or something like that?
Yeah, it's not borrowing. It's, you know, we always, we always run a, we always run a tight budget, and we make sure that the end of, at the end of the year, we have more money left over than we're spending. So at the, at the very least, we would be taking from that forward balance next year. But we have every reason to believe that we'll be recovering that, the money lost, which would provide, you know, about an extra $300,000 for the budget that would be going into our, our savings essentially.
Okay, I just wanted to, wanted you to clarify the-
As far as the federal, the federal money, yeah, there, there is supposedly like another round of stimulus monies that are coming through. What exactly that's going to look like for local municipalities? I don't know. I've been told it would be kind of like the CDBG program where federal monies, you know, we would apply for it, but it's not money that we would want to be using for like ongoing expenses like salaries. It would, you know, we're still gathering information.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And how much of an increase are you guys asking us?
A thousand dollars a month, so 12,000. Cutter, did you have any insight from your first Finance Committee meeting?
Um, yeah, it was super fascinating to see all the, you know, background workings of everything and just echoing what's already been said. I think this is in the best interest of the city because we're, we're going to get the best candidate we can, and I think that's a really important position to get the best one we can, so.
Okay. Linda, did you have anything else to add from the Finance Committee meeting?
No, I, I don't think so. I think you said it all. Thank you. And I'm just, I, I just think everybody's on board, so we don't have anything to worry about. And I really don't, I feel really assured that we're going to be fine. We're not going to lose any money. But we will gain a better candidate and a better CT by adding a little bit of money to the coffers, so. That's it.
Okay. All right, that is all we have for the work session unless anybody wants to throw anything out there. All right, hearing that, we'll take a 12-minute recess. I'll say, 11-minute recess. We'll see you, see you all back at 7:30. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Here we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back to the Tenino City Council, March 9th, 2021 City Council meeting. Let the record show that all council members, I think they're present. I see Jason. I see Rachel. I see Cutter. I see John. Do I see Linda? And there's Linda. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please stand for this flag salute. Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have an agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
I'd like to make a change to the agenda.
Okay, so.
Change or addition?
Move to amend the agenda to include the Resolution 2021-02 for payment of attorney fees in defense of the recall petition.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to include Resolution 2021-02. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Now we have an amended agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to approval of the 2/2/2021 regular city council meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the consent calendar consisting of February 24th, 2021, through March 9th, 2021. Payroll EFTs and check number 29732 in the amount of $23,085.26. Claims checks number 29733 through 29772 and EFTs in the amount of $63,894.35 for a grand total of $86,979.61, as well as liquor cannabis license application renewals for Tenino Farmers Market and Tenino Market Fresh.
Move to approval.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to approve the consent calendar as presented. Do we have any discussion?
I just want to thank everybody down at, down at the office going through a lot of transition, and you're doing a great job so far. Thank you very much. I appreciate it all.
Thank you. Good job. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We've already had an executive session. That brings us to presentations. Where were we going to include George? Was that under reports?
I think it was under study or the chamber.
Okay, he had a, we can, we can throw George Sharp on there now and give him five minutes. Does that work for you, George? You wanted to present on the, on the survey?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
The survey starts, survey starts on page 27 of your packet. So this is the next step of helping write the economic development chapter of the comprehensive plan. You currently don't have an economic development chapter, so that's something that the Thurston EDC is working with you on. And we took this to the Planning Commission in their January meeting, have them review it. They had no comments to add to it. So the next step is to bring it to council to see if there's anything that you would like to have addition before we actually release this out to the public to ask them to complete the survey. I'll just scroll along there. First, the question is, how long have they lived in Tenino? The next question is, what do you think Tenino's economic development strengths are? Then we give them a list of things that they can choose from, but also there's a comment box that they can add to if there's other strengths that they think that we haven't included on the list. The next question is, what do you think are Tenino's economic development challenges? And again, there's a few things that we give them to choose from, and then also a comment box that they can choose from. How should Tenino's challenges be addressed is the next question with some suggestions, and again, a comment box for them to be able to comment on. And then, as growth changes occurs in Thurston County and can impact Tenino, how do you feel about growth and changes in Tenino? This could be growth in size, population growth, and residential and commercial activity, growth in government, traffic, or any way you want to define growth. For example, if you choose very positively, then you might feel that Tenino should grow aggressively by adding more commercial development and housing. If you choose very negatively, you might feel that you want to see no growth happen at all. And then they're able to categorize how they feel, my general feeling about growth, commercial growth, more land, zone commercial, more commercial businesses, residential growth, more housing built, more population, industrial growth, more industrial zone property. Again, their options are very positive, positive, neutral, negative, very negative, and then there's also a box for comments. The next question would be, what would you like to preserve in the city of Tenino? This could be the general feel of our rural, small town, or more specific, such as historic buildings, natural areas, certain community events. What would you like to see changed in the city of Tenino? That's an open question. What kinds of assets are missing now that you would like to have here? This could be anything from types of businesses, services, buildings, recreation. The next question is, where do you shop for or get your services? Next question are, are there types of businesses or industries that you would like to keep out of Tenino? Next question, are you, and then we go into some business owner questions. Are you a business owner in the city of Tenino? If yes, what type of business do you have? What makes Tenino a good place to do business? What makes Tenino a difficult place to do business? Is there anything else that you need to run your business that is missing in Tenino that you have to go outside the city for? And what could the city of Tenino, Tenino Area Chamber Commerce and Thurston Economic Development Council do to help your business? Is there anything else that they'd add, add on for the comment? So we're looking for council to see if that, that resonates with you, and if there's anything you would like to see added or subtracted to the survey.
I, I would suggest that each person take the survey that George has provided and then provide it back to George, and then if there's any, any additional comment, maybe provide that to him. Does that sound like a good plan, George?
That sounds great.
Okay, so if everybody, that's your homework, is do George's survey.
Once we have that feedback, then we're going to release this both on a website. And there's, it's a Survey Monkey survey, so people have a link to fill that out. We will also print some off, so print it and make those available. And then also we'll release this on the Tenino Area Chambers Facebook page and also release it to Tenino Talk group.
Awesome. All right, does anybody have any questions for George?
Yes. George, I don't know if you know, this, this type, this almost same survey was done maybe 10, 12 years ago. What would be really interesting to see, because we have a demographic shift going on in the city, a lot of, a lot of us old folk like me are starting to drop out, move, whatever, and we've got a lot more young people moving in. It would be interesting to see the comparison between, if you could find the, the one that was done earlier.
Sir Callahan, I tried to find that. I worked with TRPC. They couldn't find it in their documents, and the city didn't have a, of that. So we put a request out to see if anybody else might know of where that survey is, but we could not find, locate the results of the previous one.
Okay, thank you. Would have been interesting to see the difference.
All right. Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, George.
Back up to our agenda. That brings us to public comment. If there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment at this time, please mic up and let us know your name and address. You will be given three minutes to provide public comment. Again, this is the public comment period. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, now is your opportunity to do so. Going once. Going twice. Moving on. That brings us to, we have no public hearings. We have no proclamations. That brings us to old business. On 3/4/2021, the Finance Committee met to review the current budget position and make specific recommendations to salary of the Clerk Treasurer position. I'll hand the meeting over to, well, I'll, I'll pass the baton to Linda since she's the Finance Committee Chair in the event that she would like to make any further comments or motion.
Mr. Mayor, since it was just, we just talked about this in the, the work session. We're now in officials, an official set, session. Could you give a brief of what's actually going on here and why we're doing this so that everybody that's out there knows what's going on?
Yes. So we, thank you. So we have a vacancy with the Clerk Treasurer position. This is kind of the, the, the primary mover. This is the chief position within the, within the city. The Clerk Treasurer fills basically two disciplines, which is Office Manager, Clerical Manager, and also the Chief Financial Officer. In many cities, this is, this is more than one person. In many cities, this is multiple, this is two departments full of people. In smaller cities, that don't have large budgets and the ability to have an entire finance department and a, an entire clerk department, they will have a combined Clerk Treasurer position in Tenino. That's been the, the case for a long time. We've toyed with different ideas of bifurcating the two and having two positions, but that is not something that Tenino can afford. We have looked at other communities and the salary ranges for individuals that work in these disciplines, and Tenino is having a difficult time being competitive. And so, you know, we are at, we did ask at the last meeting that the Finance Committee meet and review and make a recommendation to City Council whether or not some additional funding could be released and allocated to the Clerk Treasurer position. The Finance Committee did so the other day on the, on the 4th, and they have made the recommendation. I was hoping Linda could brief this, but the Finance Committee-
I lost the, I lost the connection. I'm, yes, I'm here. The Finance Committee recommends that we add $1,000 a month or $12,000 a year to the Clerk Treasurer's position in order to get a qualified candidate to fill that position. It's, it's really a hard job, so that's all I have.
And it's a skilled job. This would take the range, and I, I don't have, the budget is not right in front of me. But I want to say it would take the range up to about $68,000 to like $76,000 a year.
Yeah, or a little more.
Yeah, some approximately. We feel that that would allow us to attract some, some more qualified candidates. At this point, we have had a few applicants, but they really lack the, the, the experience and the, and the, and the qualifications to be able to confidently fill, fill the role.
Okay, one last thing that, if you could fill them in on, is how this is being funded. The rest of the council, this is all housekeeping, but for people that are watching, it would be nice for them to know.
Okay, good point. So every year when we pass the city budget, we, you know, for the last couple of years, we've been very fortunate, and we've had a fund excess at the end of the year. We have had a fund, we have a fund excess in the 2021 budget. It is, it is a slim margin because we did suffer some losses through a fraud incident. We are, we are however confident that we will be recovering those, the, the funds lost. But even if we don't, we do, we do have a fund excess that would, that would cover this, this reallocation of funds. So this would just be simply from the, from the general fund. We wouldn't have to be robbing from Peter to pay Paul. This is, this is fund excess at the end of the year that we'd be tapping into.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember O'Callahan, seconded by Councilmember Lawton to, to add an additional $1,000 a month to the salary of Clerk Treasurer from the general fund. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, what I'd like to say is that Tenino finds itself in a very unique position to actually be able to do something like this because of what's, what we've been going through for the past year. We've been extremely frugal with our funds. We've still been able to give raises when, whenever we could, and this is one that needs to happen. Again, we've been very, very lucky as far as, as our funding is going to even be able to talk about a budget access.
I, I wouldn't say it's luck. I would say that the council has done a good job keeping an eye on things, that we've done a good job, you know, not being frivolous. And, and, and so we're not, we're not in a bad position. I know several other cities that were not able to give raises to their staffs. We, we didn't skip a beat. So good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Call for the question.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We're, we're going to redouble our efforts now that we've got this additional funding, and we will, you know, we will, you know, post out there and cast the net far and wide for filling the, filling the spot. So thank you. All right, we're moving on to new business. Under RCW 49, I'm going to hand it over to Mayor Protem Linda Godovak.
Thank you, Mary Feneer, Mayor Feneer. Under RCW 4.96.041, the city is actually under obligation to pay for any kind of, of action brought against a city employee or council member, for that matter. Resolution number 2021-02 authorizing payment of expense, defense expenses pursuant RCW 4.96.041. Whereas Mayor Wayne Feneer has become aware that a demand for recall and discharge from office has or will be brought against him pursuant RCW 298.56.110. And whereas Mayor Feneer has requested the city defend him against any recall action brought against him. And whereas, under RCW 94.96.041, Section 3, the necessary expenses of defending an elective officer of a local government entity in a judicial hearing to determine the sufficiency of a recall charge as provided in RCW 29.82.023 shall be paid by the local government entity if the officer requests such defense and approval is granted by both the legislative authority of the local governmental entity and attorney representing the local governmental entity. And whereas, under RCW 4.96.041, Section 3, the expenses paid by the local governmental entity may include costs associated with an appeal of the decision rendered by the Superior Court concerning the sufficiency of the recall charge. And whereas, the city attorney has spoken with Mayor Feneer about a potential recall and approves of his request for defense as described herein. Therefore, now therefore, be it resolved, the city shall pay the defense cost of any recall petition brought against the mayor within the next six months to the extent authorized under law and not covered by the city's insurance pool. Be it further resolved, the city attorney shall approve defense counsel with respect to any defense provided pursuant to this resolution adopted this ninth day of March 2021 by the City Council. I'd like to say that there are attorneys also. It needs to be noted that our attorneys believe that these are lies and will be seeking attorney fees from the petitioner when this is over.
Happy to hear that.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
Okay, since nobody wants to make the approval of something that's basically housekeeping and is set by the state, I'll go ahead and get the, the motion started. Move approval to approve.
My second. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Mr. Mayor, are we in discussion now?
Linda's, Linda's leading, so yes.
Okay. Mayor, Mayor Protem, are we in discussion now?
Yes, we're in the discussion. Any discussion?
Okay. What you just heard was a whole bunch of numbers and RCWs and yada, 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 blah, blah, blah. What this boils down to, and I think I'm the only one on council that has gone through this twice before, this is something that is set forth by the state. It is not something that, that is really any more than housekeeping, but whenever you have something like this, it has to come before council to say yes to. There really is no, no. I believe that there is other, if the council decided no, it's not going to happen. There are other avenues that would trigger to make, so that the state would step in and say, yes, you are going to pay for this. We've done this twice before. Once was for political actions, which was just fine. The other one was for personal, and even the personal one by state rule, we had to go ahead and approve that. So that's why I moved approval for this because we don't really have much other choice. Some people are going to not like this decision, but we're, we're in a position where the state has said, yes, you will do this. All the RCWs are there that says, yes, you will do this. So yes, that's why I made the motion to go ahead and do this because it is laid out by the state what we need to do.
It, it, this is, this is unfortunate. You know, this is a, this is not an expense that, that we want to, we want to see money wasted on. But, you know, citizens do have the right to do this, but they do also have, have the responsibility of being truthful and honest. And, you know, this is, you know, if you read the charges, you can easily see that, you know, when somebody says that I said something at a meeting I didn't even attend, that's easily shown to be lies. So our, you know, the attorney does believe that the petitioner will potentially be responsible for these attorney fees. So, you know, hopefully that'll be the case. You know, nobody likes frivolous lawsuits. Nobody likes, you know, mistruths and, and somebody manipulating the facts. So i, i, it's unfortunate that, that somebody's done that.
Is that it for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Now, now you turn the meeting back over.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem Godtback. That brings us to resolutions, ordinances, reports. Do we have a report from the Chamber of Commerce?
Normally I go, but I missed that. Linda, do you go?
I believe there's a meeting next week, right? Okay, Economic Development Council? George?
Yeah, nothing further to share with you other than what we did the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. VCB, Fire District Twelve.
Thursday.
Thank you, sir. Library, the library, I believe is present tonight. Linda?
Yes, yes, I am present. And I actually have a small presentation to do with my, with my report and I'm getting my.
Jen can handle the, there you go.
As long as I can find my report here. Make sure it is. Okay, all right. It looks like you can see that. So I just wanted to give a quick update about the library's interior remodel, which is coming up very quickly. Pieces are starting to fall into shape, to fall into place. And the important thing to know right now is that we are looking at a closure starting March fifteenth and estimated being done on April seventeenth, which means that's a Saturday, so we'd reopen the following Tuesday following our normal open pattern. So of course, there are some questions that come to mind immediately and the first one is who's paying? And Timberland is footing the bill for this, coming out of our, our building fund. I've mentioned at previous council meetings that we were ordering new shelving and it's kind of morphed into kind of a interior overhaul. So I, I'm certainly not opposed to that and I'm sure people use the library will like to see the improvements as well. The building will not be open at all during the closure. And there will no, there will not be any takeout where people can pick up their, the materials on hold. The two things that will be happening are that the book return will still be open and that we will still have tax forms available on the takeout shelf. What people need to know about the book return is that it will not be being emptied every day. It'll be emptied twice a week. And then it will need to go into quarantine for a day. So there will be a delay in people seeing the items come off of their account, but there are no overdue fees, so no worries there. And we will be emptying that for people's convenience so they don't need to make a trip to another library. What will staff be doing? Well, Jamie and Serena are going to be working at other buildings during this project time. I'm going to either be in the building or teleworking depending on whether or not I'll be in the way with what is being done at that time. So what's being done? Lots of stuff. So we are getting new shelving. This shelving, one of the big improvements is that besides being new, is that it is going to be lower. Right now, all of our shelving except that what was in the children's area, the eighty-four inches, which means that you just feel kind of closed in by a forest of bookshelves. These will be topping out at sixty-three inches, which means long way down the road when we get to do the expanded access hours, which council has approved the concept that it will, we will have shelving that is friendly to that project so that the security cameras can go in and we don't have a holdup for that. We're getting mostly new furniture. So we're replacing all of the upholstered furniture with high-quality vinyl and this is in response to COVID, but also just regular cleaning practices. It's a lot easier to make furniture look nicer when there aren't stains on the fabric that, you know, take a really good steam cleaning to get out or that don't come out at all. We will also be having the interior painted. And there will be a new office space built and that's why this picture of the little alcove is there. Is that alcove will be enclosed, will have a, a door and a window and that will be the manager's office. I have to say thank you to the city for handling the building permit for that. That was a big a great thing for you guys to pick up. One, one less thing that I have to worry about. Okay, let's move on here. But there's more. So the historical photo on the left is of the old library and I don't know that this picture will be used, but I'm working with Jessica at the museum to identify some historical photos of Tenino and potentially the library that we'll use in decor. So trying to infuse a little bit of the history of the city and you know, something that's unique to the community here as being part of the library interior. And we are also having a upgrade of our wifi infrastructure that will take place before September thirtieth. So hopefully people will be seeing a difference in the speed and the, you know, the access that they have for the wifi, which that I should also mention that will still be on during the remodel. So people who come to the parking lot to do a quick check of email or or send some texts or look some things up, that will still be available. And we have already gotten started. Down the left, Jamie is labeling the shelves so that we know once they're all in a big pallet like in the middle photo, that we know how to put them back without having a big pile of books in the middle of the library and wondering what to do. And Serena there is loading up the pallet with some of the stuff that's a little bit more easily boxed and moved before our facilities people come in to do the majority of the packing up of the, of the materials. And to the right is just a little sample of some of the big changes we're seeing in the library. It's very odd to see empty shelving and today we now we've removed a lot of the shelving that is not being used and the upholstered furniture. So there's like huge open spaces, which is a very different, very different look than what we normally see. So it's fun to see things getting underway. And I did want to thank a couple of people already, not only the city for the building permit and stuff, but I have to give a shout out to the Public Works guys for working around our, well, quite frankly, mess the last couple of months as we moved furniture around and tried to clear areas and, and start working on things. And now they're navigating around pallets full of materials and, and they're doing a great job. So appreciate their patience as we try to make this big change and we couldn't do without you. So thank you very much. The other thing that I wanted to, I wanted to give a shout out to the Lions. They came today to remove all of that furniture and you can see there took a multiple trucks, a trailer and more than one trip. But they managed to do that. And what I really appreciate about this is that when they do their furniture sale, the proceeds go to support Tenino institutions like the food bank, the scholarships they offer and other organizations within the city. So I feel like that's a nice cycle of life, shall we say, for, for the furniture. I'm glad that it's going to be helping Tenino and also that it's not landing, landing up in the landfill. Let's see, and last I wanted to thank Jessica of the museum. She's been a great help and while we haven't settled on all of the photos quite yet, I know that we will do that and it's been a lot of fun. Kind of history buffs, it's been a lot of fun to see some of the older photos, so.
Jessica's pretty great, isn't she?
Yeah, I mean, I have one phone call. She shot me some things by email and we're going to keep working on it. But yeah, it's really fun to work with her. So that's it for me unless people have questions or more information that I can provide or whatever.
It's not looking like that, but thank you. Thanks for coming and giving us an update, Linda. It's really exciting to see you guys doing so many great things.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting. I'll try to, you know, I'll be coming to at least once a month to the meetings and you can always keep an eye on our Facebook page. We'll be putting some updates there too. I excited, it's gonna be a pretty amazing difference.
Yeah, awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Next. We'll go back, get back to the agenda here. Museum. Any report from the museum there?
No, you've heard a, a good portion of what's been going on.
Yep, okay. Tenino Community Service Center. They have an event coming up, the Robin Rudy Memorial Ride. Council members Lawton and Councilmember Davidson will be attending on the city's behalf. This is to memorialize Robin Rudy, the, the founder of the Tenino Food Bank, Tenino Community Service Center. Arch Commission, is there any report, George?
Yeah, we've had one of our applications come in and we have three more that are underway.
Solid work, sir. Civil Service Commission has not met. But Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee, I think they're getting ready to start meeting again. Finance Committee, you heard their report. Planning Commission is tomorrow night.
I do have a, a little, little something here. We met via email and we approved application of Chris Hallett, who has purchased the building between the Eagles and the landmark to finish the windows that were started. He's it's, it's going, it's gonna, it's going to finally be working building. It's going to be all fixed up on the outside. The windows are going to be replaced. They're going to put new oh, what are they called?
He was talking about sandstone windowsills.
There you go, windowsills.
Pretty cool. I'm, I'm pretty excited for the potential there.
Right, right. So anyway, we've approved that grant and this that's my report for the facade committee.
Thank you, council member. That brings us to public safety. Chief of Police is not in attendance tonight. Director of Public Works is not in attendance tonight. City Planner, Building Official. So we've, we've started working with LG Nelson, the new building official. And things are moving forward. You know, everybody's, I'm sure well aware that Scotty B's has been demolished. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of heartache over that. That building has been around for a long time. I know I've got a lot of memories there. I'm sure Jason and Rachel and Cutter and John and everybody else has a lot of fond memories of Scotty B's. The, the owners of that complex decided that the, it would have, I'm, it would have been too expensive to renovate the building and make it functional. And I'm sure even if they did renting it out, it would be hard to recover their costs. So that, that building was pretty far gone. And I think we've talked about it before. I know we've talked about it in planning commission meetings and at city council meetings. The grocery store has decided, the owners of the grocery store have decided to put in maybe two gas pumps. They're going to be card lock gas pumps, the ones that don't have an attendant, much like you'd see at a Safeway. We have design standards and we have a planning department that has made, has made sure that it will be aesthetically pleasing and fit in with the the motif of the community. There's going to be sandstone involved. That intersection area is going to get some improvements and it's going to, I, I believe it'll improve traffic. And if you shop at Dave's or IGA or Market Fresh or whatever your, whatever you like to call it, you will get discounts on the gas pumps, which everybody needs cheaper gas. So I, it, you know, there's potential for it to be a good thing for our community. But of course, you know, any change, you know, causes, causes some friction. So, you know, watch what's going on. City Attorney, not here to report. Clerk Treasurer, Mr. Garrison.
I mean, it's at the very end is a synopsis of where we're at financially. And that really, at this time of year, it's probably premature to delve into the numbers too deeply. But the point, what I really wanted to point out to you was the total amount received is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand and the total amount spent is four hundred and forty-seven thousand. So already we're receiving more than we're spending, which with annual fees and insurance due in January at a tune of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The fact that we haven't overspent at this point in time is somewhat surprising. I wouldn't have been not surprised if we had overspent because of those expenses that go out in January. So I consider this good news. Hopefully you do too. But that's where we're at currently and we'll see how March looks, but I don't have any reason to believe it'll be different.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to Mayor. Whoa, what did I do? Where'd I go? Oh, there we go. So it's been busy. I've been meeting with attorneys. I've been in mediation. I've I had meeting, I had, I had the good fortune of having a moment to have lunch with George and Aslan today. I went to a finance committee meeting. It's been busy. You all are staying apprised of the goings on because that's a lot of what this agenda has salt and pepper throughout it. So I, I don't need to rehash out what we're already talking about. Does anybody have any questions about what the mayor's been up to? All right. Thank you. That brings us to Be That.
They had a meeting last month. They went over their budget. Next meeting is next Monday.
Okay, CIP. Solid Waste Advisory Board. Cutter, it's your time to shine.
All right, so exciting stuff is in the works. And then tomorrow at nine-thirty in the morning, I'm going to go to the Wasting Recovery Center and I'm going to have a tour there. So I'm looking, looking forward to that.
So tell us about your homework, like get us hyped up about your homework assignment.
So then we have an awesome homework assignment coming up from Solid Waste Advisory and we are looking into recycles and kind of the journey of that, where it goes. And with the Chinese National Sword Act, we're kind of seeing what the development is on that. So I will have a lot to report soon. Thank you guys.
Yeah, so Cutter was, Cutter was tasked with like, what is, what happens with recyclables? We had a lot of discussions about in the past about is recycling even recycled? And so Cutter is delving into a vast global conspiracy and he is going to come at a future time to provide a presentation to the council about what happens when you put something in the recycling bin as opposed to in the garbage bin. And I'm, I'm curious and he's already making some progress. I told him not to, not to hold, hold any punches when he goes to these places and ask the hard questions. So it's pretty cool. That brings us to Steady.
Steady will take place next week. Next Friday is the third Friday of every month. Right now, we're doing them on Zoom. We're going to have TRPC and they've hired a new consultant to talk about telework and what the impact on rural communities possibly could be with the state, state offices shutting down. How about some of them are going to go to fifty percent occupancy? That may move people out into our rural communities who are buying housing and working from home. For good.
Yes. Wow, that's amazing.
Well, Thurston County has had, through Karen, been working for something like twenty-five, thirty years on trying to do telecommuting. COVID did, did in a short period of time what we've been working on forever. And it's also showing and it's starting to hit New York for a big time that people do not have to live in the city to do the same kind of work. It used to be that employers did not trust their employees to do the work that was needed. And that's why telework was such a hard nut.
to do the work that was needed and that's why telework was such a hard nut to crack. This proved that employees are, are being responsive and responsible for the work that they're doing and getting everything taken care of on time. And it seems that a, a lot of people that are telecommuting are a lot more relaxed because they have more time to take care of family, more time to take care of the work. Well, you know, just shifted throughout the day. That's where everything gets done. So the future that we've been talking about with telecommuting for years and years, let's, let's go ahead and say it outright, decades, is finally coming to fruition.
It's amazing. I, I read a thing about there's certain Caribbean islands that there, you know, because tourism was no longer a thing, they issued a year-long citizenship to anybody that wanted to come in and telework from paradise. And a lot of people took them up on, on that.
Well, I don't know why the council, council can't do that.
Well, you could.
Technically, we are.
Yeah, yeah, we're in, I'm in paradise. Are you, are you in paradise, Linda? Alright, that brings us to TCOM 911. We heard from them last meeting. Tenino School Board.
Well, last month, the school board selected a candidate for the superintendent. His name is Clint, Clint Indicott, who will start July 1st. And as of this week, all students K through 12 have officially gone back to in-person learning. So I think it's going good. That's the report I got from a bunch of teenagers, so I'm pretty excited about that.
Good report. It's credible.
Oh yeah, teenagers, they, they know, yeah, they know everything.
Yeah, thank you.
No, one thing I would like to add as well is the school is still doing their bag lunches every Monday through Friday. And the pickup location is in the parking lot of the elementary and middle school. So it goes from 11 to 2 and it's for everybody, every student. It's not just for the ones that are on free lunches in that program. And they also do a weekend bag on Fridays. So it just kind of helps, helps each kid throughout the weekend and parents as well with snacks and breakfast items and stuff. So if you're in the area and you have a kid in the district, stop by between 11 and 2 and get your grab bags.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Davidson. TRPC.
Perfect. A fascinating meeting. We had a presentation on sidewalks and I've never been so interested in sidewalks. I highly recommend everyone to look up TRPC and then just type in sidewalks. There is a whole map of the Thurston County sidewalks. And they did surveys on where like there's full sidewalks and a break and more sidewalks. It's awesome. And then Joshua Island had a summary of the state transportation plan and that was also a really wonderful presentation, all around exciting meeting.
Awesome. Thank you, Cutter.
I want Cutter's energy.
I know. I was, I was literally just texting Jen, writing, I love Cutter. TP, TPB.
Okay, I was waiting for the after, after report and it hasn't come yet. So basically going back to what Cutter was talking about, he got the report after we did. The biggest takeaway that I got from that was again, all the different breaks in North County sidewalks. And what I stood up and started telling them was that it's all nice and dandy that we have these and we can see what these all are. But the difference, the difference problems that we have in South County don't even come close to the problems that they think that they have in North County. Their funding is easier, being able to get things done is easier. Look at what we've been, what we've had to do down here. We did, we did right outside of the city hall several years ago under the mayorship of, it doesn't matter, I can't think of the name right now. We did a section that was supposed to take care of all of downtown. And by the time the state, because it was state, federal money, by the time all of that got eaten into, we were down to two blocks of, of semi-new sidewalks and just a few other spots of handicapped stuff. That, so I brought all of that stuff up to them and everybody just got quiet because they didn't understand how difficult it is for South County to get sidewalks taken care of.
Yeah. And we love you too, John.
Thank you, John.
Alright, that brings us to public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please mic up, state your name and your address. You'll have three minutes to speak. Again, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, this is your opportunity. You have three minutes. Going once, going twice, gone. That brings us to announcements. Is there anyone that would like to provide an announcement?
Actually, go ahead, Linda.
Well, this is not an announcement. It's something kind of we have to do because we didn't do it when we were talking about the recall. A move to authorize the city to sign into the contract with Young Love and Coker Law for defense of their recall position, petition. So we didn't do that and I believe we have to do that, don't we?
I, I think the resolution.
Resolution takes care of all of it.
Yeah, the resolution is saying that everyone commits to that action.
Okay, okay. Alright, thank you. Sorry, John, go ahead.
Not a problem. I wanted to do this in public. I was, I planned on making the steady meeting last week, last month and I fell asleep when I sat down on my chair. As you all know, I work graveyard. I texted an apology to George. So George, I want to say it in public right now. I apologize for not attending last month's meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Callaghan.
Are there any further announcements?
Yeah, it's not really an announcement, but just to let everyone know, Clint is a really good interviewer and he's super prepared for the job. So the school's in good hands with the superintendent choice.
Awesome, awesome.
Mayor, I do have one other announcement.
Yes, sir.
There's gonna be the Tenino Arts Spring Market take place in the new Kodiak Room, which is formerly the Vault. That'll be next Friday, Saturday and Sunday, 9:30 AM till 7:30 on Friday, 9:30 AM to 6:30 on Saturday and 9:30 AM till 5:00 PM on Sunday. And we have about 25 artisans, mostly from the area, that will be on display.
Thank you, sir.
That's a week from this Friday, the 19th, 20th and 21st.
You might have seen it on the Tenino Police Department Facebook page, but we swore in two new officers. These are not new positions. These are the ones vacated by Rob and Sam. So if you get a chance seeing them around, introduce yourself. They are now in the FTO phase, but it's going pretty well as one of them was a level three reserve with us already. So that makes an easy transition. And the other one is an experienced officer who worked for Evergreen State College prior to us and the State Patrol and the Records Department. So they'll be out, they'll be out in the streets. We would, I know we would normally bring them to a council meeting and introduce them, but it just, nothing seems just to have the, kind of the, the luster and the, the the meaning when you're doing it online. So I hope that when we do transition to in-person, we can, you know, get up to speed on all those things and we can properly introduce them to you guys. So, but you, you, you have met Drew before. So that's my announcement. Any further announcements? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.
Non-debatable motion. You all have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.